District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:03 PM Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members. We also have invited cabinet members, Superintendent Kent Pecquell, a non-voting ex-officio member, who is attending virtually, Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Clerk Amundson?
Here.
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Chair Marvin?
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Here.
And Director Workman?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. 3.01, Discussion of the Right Drivers for Whole System Success by Michael Fulon. And Dr. Pecquell, I believe you have some opening comments for this group.
Yeah, am I coming across awfully for those of you? Oh, that's great. Well, my apologies for coming to you from an empty house in St. Paul, but as I mentioned in an email, I was driving back from the state Minnesota Association of School Administrators Conference in Duluth and dropping something in the house, which we close on in a week or so, and I got a flat tire. And so luckily, I had the same mechanic for years, and they squeezed me in. And I do have tires, so we'll head back down to Rochester tonight. But I'm not sure how much I'll be able to hear, and so I may not be able to stay on the whole session. But I did think, but I'll stay as long as I can hear, because I would love to be in dialogue with you. The idea of the Board and the Cabinet reading something together grew out of some conversations that Jeanne and Kathy and I had during our exec meetings about the value of just beginning to understand each other's perspectives on important educational issues. And so I thought about a piece that we could be that was very strategic as opposed to looking at one specific aspect of the work of schools of the district, and that frankly, all school was free and open access, so that nobody would need to buy it or have it behind a paywall. And so that led to this piece by Michael Fulon. As someone who may know, Fulon is a very highly regarded academic. He's Canadian, so he doesn't always use language or examples that are deeply rooted in the American experience. He has done a lot of work, of course, in his native Canada, particularly Ontario, where they have had really extraordinary educational progress, I think partly based on some of the research, including closing up gaps. But he's also done a lot of work in the UK, Australia, New Zealand, and then in the US and particularly California. He's a guru of, and one of the reasons I like this piece is because it's infused with his thinking about stuff he got wrong. And I think one of the things that I talked about in my application for the position of interim superintendent was the need for us in education to be willing to try stuff and fail fast, learn. And one of the things I liked about Fulon's paper is that he highlights places where he thinks some of his previous analysis was off the mark. I think I should say about this piece that it's a heavy lift, even though I think he's a good writer, it's dense. So I didn't make through anytime I put it in one setting. I also think it's a perfect piece, like most any things, but it's very recent, and I think it does a good job of synthesizing some large bodies of thinking that are often separate from each other. That said, I think part of the purpose of us reading something together is also to disagree with it. There are things in this paper that don't reflect how you see education in general or Rochester Public Schools in particular. I think that's good. I think it's part of the point. I don't suggest this piece because I think it is an exact blueprint for what we need in Rochester Public Schools. That said, I think there are some really big themes that are very much worthy of our consideration here, and they really are encapsulated in these four big drivers of system change that Fulon talks about. The first of which is from a narrow definition of the purpose of education, from an obsession academics, to a broader emphasis on well-being and learning. I think that's very conversant with some of the discussions that we've had as we've been on Strategic Action Plan. The second is an emphasis from what he kind, he calls machine intelligence. And here, the argument gets pretty complex, because he's really talking a lot of artificial intelligence. And there in Rochester, we really are in the worldwide center of one of the organizations that is applying artificial intelligence to improving human capacity in the Mayo Clinic, which is pioneering the use of artificial intelligence for healthcare. And Fulon talks about in schools, we really need to be embracing the mission of social intelligence, which has deep roots in education, back to, you know, research on cooperative learning that has been around for decades. But I think Fulon paints a pretty compelling case about the need to build schools that intentionally cultivate that social intelligence. And he has some fascinating anecdotes in there about, we as humans, our humans are wired, help each other, and unfortunately, schools often, I don't know if it's fair to say eat that out of kids, but don't nurture it. So that's the second driver, machine intelligence to social intelligence. The third, from what he talks about, an emphasis on austerity to equality investments, and investing the additional resources that kids growing up in marginalized communities need to thrive. And then the final one, which I thought was actually the most useful for us as we begin the development of our Strategic Action Plan, and that's a shift from fragmentation to systemness. I think his term, systemness, is kind of weird, because it's not a very common use of the term. I'm not even sure it really is a word, but I love, I think it really encapsulates this idea of systems that are, we're saying, and for all of us as board members and cabinet members, who at times feel that we're continually reacting to this parent concern, or this teacher concern, or this, you know, lawsuit, or this, you know, piece of evidence or research we read about, and then we lack a place where that work can be thoughtfully considered and implemented. This emphasis on systemness versus fragmentation to me seems super relevant. And then the final thing I'll say about why I recommended to our chair that we use this piece as a lead, was that within this long video are some citations of longer studies that I hope some of you will decide to pursue. In particular, he talks about new research by Robert Putnam, who's at Harvard, that is a fascinating study that really convincingly, in my view, makes the case that American history is a constant tension of shifting from I to B to I. Putnam's analysis suggests that since the 1960s, we have been on a trajectory toward I, and that education is increasingly seen as a personal commodity, a reward for your kids, that is not something that we are very concerned with sharing equally among the society. And then the second thing is he often has a reference to a book by two economists called The Race Between Education and Technology, which is a very heavy, but is probably one of my top five favorite books on education, where it really describes how in the 20th century, the United States really got it right, and investing as the first country in the world took this in primary and secondary education for all young people. We really became a society in which for seven decades, real incomes did rise, were all growth, they didn't rise equitably, and there were still deep systems of injustice. But we saw dramatic improvements at the beginning of the 20th century. High school graduation rates were in the single digits, and by the end of the 20th century, most all kids were graduating high school. It was, it really was a social movement, not just education reform. So he also references a book by Golden and Katz that is called The Race Between Education and Technology. So there's a tie in this piece. I thank you for leaning in to try and read it. I will put myself on mute now, and won't try and talk too much if I can't hear it. But I appreciate the chance to kind of frank why I suggested that this is a document that was worth our time to talk about as we embark on launch of planning in Rochester Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Pecquell. Cabinet members, board members, I think we all have copies of the questions that Dr. Pecquell prepared for us to consider during this discussion, and I think we'll start with those certainly. And then if you find something that he hasn't included here, that you think is really a compelling idea, we can absolutely talk about that, too. For the purposes of this session, can we just try not raising hands, but just speaking? So if you have something to say and somebody else is talking, just figure it out, but don't wait to be called on. I know that we want to hear everybody who has something to say, and we can absolutely agree or disagree. The one thing I hope we don't get into is, as Dr. Pecquell said, the author, Michael Fulon, is Canadian, and he spells a lot of words with S's that should be spelled with Z's. So just, it's a different spelling system, and so I hope we don't get lulled into using that for our students. First question Dr. Pecquell presents for us is, he says, Fulon argues that COVID-19 pandemic has set the context for radical change. And the question, after all this district has been through with the pandemic and so many other kinds of unrest, equity, mistrust, other issues that are going on, do you think that that has set the stage for changes in this district? And one of my favorite statements or sayings is that the only one who likes change is a wet baby. But maybe is it possible that because of the pandemic and other issues, that we're really ready to do things differently, or not? And everyone's waiting for somebody to raise their hand. I know that.
I'll start. First of all, Dr. Pecquell, can you hear me? If you can, I will take my mask off or adjust it. Silence. Silence.
Just, I can't hear anything, basically, so I'm watching you and wishing I was there. So don't, just ignore, I'm not a, not a, but please go ahead.
So one of the things that I observed, and I'm sure many, if not all of us here did as well, is when the pandemic first hit, everybody was forced to change things in a hurry, and we were forced to sit, to think outside the box. You know, there's nothing like a crisis to provide a good opportunity for us to think differently about how we do things. And I think we've learned not only what not to do, but perhaps some things that we can do that we would like to continue to do in the years, in the years ahead. So what kinds of changes has the pandemic set the stage for? And for me, I think the most important one is that it has, it's allowing us or encouraging us or forcing us to actually think differently and outside the box.
You know, from my perspective, one thing that has changed is that a whole lot of parents have had the experience of becoming their children's teachers or helping their children more in terms of schoolwork than they did before. And it's been, I think, a real realization for a lot of folks, what teachers do, and that it's not just showing up and reading a book. And so I think that was a realization. My own grown children learned that the hard way.
I think it's also really highlighted for people who are not children and not teachers, that children learn differently. I think that that's been, has become very apparent to those of us who weren't watching that closely.
I think one thing that happened rapidly as a result of our experiences is the online school that we launched, and we had to do that because we have students who now realize and parents that realize that's a better platform for their child to learn. So I'm glad we were able to respond that quickly, and we talked a lot about how, oh, that's a silver lining, it's a silver lining. But even within RPS Online, we are having discussions about, it's not enough that we're online. That doesn't mean that we're different enough for the child, or that we're responding to individual need. I was lucky enough to be at Overland when there was a conversation with an art teacher, and she was saying that she was having a hard time making sure that her kids were engaged for 50 minutes, which is an elementary art period, before she sent the kids back virtually to their teacher. And we had this great discussion about, you have this really unique opportunity in a virtual world to form small groups, to talk about their artwork while they're doing it, to spin off from, okay, you've demonstrated this objective or this standard that we're working on, so how can you apply that to something else that you're interested in in terms of creating, right? So it's not like, you're coming to my classroom for 50 minutes, and you're going to do this project that I designed, and it's going to look pretty much like I wanted it to look as the teacher, to transforming so kids are expressing themselves the way they want to express themselves, and that the virtual environment allows more collaboration with one another. So it's a really interesting discussion to watch that teacher kind of go from the traditional, taking her, what she has done in her traditional in-person classroom, and not just dropping it into the virtual environment, but transforming how she is interacting and expecting kids to demonstrate understanding of the standard.
I also think it gives students a perspective of what it could look like differently than the traditional eight-period in-person day that we had before. And I hope it turns a light bulb on for all of them when we go to them and ask for their input and their opinion on, you know, issues at the district, because they've seen something different, and I'm sure they could imagine a whole bunch of other scenarios that their experience being away from the classroom and virtually has brought them in the past year. So I think sometimes when you just do it the way you've always done it, it's hard to picture how it's different. But they saw virtually, they saw blocked schedules at the high school level, you know, they saw the capacity to manage their time differently than they would if they were in the building the whole day. I just think there's a wealth of ideas that I think our students would have if we sat down with them and said, not just how it went, but how does it make you think about your schooling differently?
I think in terms of whether it set the context for radical change, I think it did in a sense of like systemic change for those who were already comfortable with how the system was working, because other minoritized groups were already either trying to do these things, or they basically were being flexible and creative, either with or without the system. And so there are a lot of families that already knew these changes needed to be made and had been requesting them. But we, as the system, didn't recognize or acknowledge or honor the fact that we could just make it on a large scale. So we were either piecemealing or sending people to, you know, other programs or other schools. And so I felt like it put the onus on leadership for us to say, okay, you've been asking us enough, and now we are having to do this because of the pandemic, because those who are typically privileged and work fine in the way that the system works now don't have that privilege, and so we have to correct to include everyone. And so I think it uncovered a lot, but only to those who just weren't aware of it in the first place, or didn't want to be aware of it in the first place. So, and what kind of changes the pandemic set the stage for for us? I think, you know, everybody's already sort of picked out a number of different things. I would also say how we quickly realized and had to mobilize food for kids. That was something that very many people didn't realize, how much the community relied on us to basically provide almost 90-plus percent of nutrition to children. But again, I think many people already knew that to be the case, and we just didn't realize that we were responsible for doing those things, and sometimes we were responsible for, I can't remember who it was, maybe it was Jackie, explaining that, you know, we, if we've always done it that way, that's the way it's always going to get done. And so this, the pandemic just didn't allow for that to happen, because people that are typically advantaged were disadvantaged for, sometimes for some of them the first time. And so we had to think about, like, how do we get these individuals what they need? Oh, and yes, everybody else also is experiencing this plus. So I think minoritized groups were already trying to do this radical change, like a family or one little system at a time, where now we have to recognize and accept our own responsibility as part of that. So I'm, I would say in that sense, I'm appreciative of the context, I guess, that COVID-19 provided to others who don't often have to think about other people, or people who look or live differently than they do.
You know, and sort of along that line, too, I think a lot of people recognized how much so many have come to rely on our school system for so many things, for food, for childcare, for, you know, after-school activities, for all these things that, for food shelves and clothing closets and community outreach and all these things that stopped. Some of them stopped, some of them continued. But I think it, to me, another thing it called out was that we need that community. We need everybody working together with our schools, because schools in themselves can't continue to provide more and more for more and more. But as a community, we sure can. And there were a lot of folks that came up with some really creative ways to support families, to support children, which they might not have done if their kids were still going to school every day the way they used to, you know, during the quarantine, so.
I think the pandemic forced us to reset our priorities, and just thinking about, we found a way to put a device in every student's hands, and quickly. And before that, it took years to figure that problem out. We found a way to put food on the table of all of our students, and before that, it was only for those that could afford to pay, right? Or, but I like how you mentioned the word community, because when I just saw the food piece, that was the first time for me that I felt like the whole district was on the same page, and it was for putting food on the table for kids. There were so many different partners. It was all of our buildings. It was teachers picking up food and delivering them. It was principals directing traffic because the lines were getting too long. That, to me, was all of us trying to step up and solve a problem, but it was directly related to the basic needs of our students, which was food. So I love that part. The other part that I was thinking about is, some students enjoyed not coming into our buildings, but it wasn't for necessarily a good reason. So I think about the students who are often bullied, or often teased, whatever the other verb might be, they got a little break from that, and they were able to just focus on school without being tormented, either by a peer or by an adult. And so for me, I think we have to figure out a better way to make our schools safer for our students, because no student should have to walk through a hallway, or no adult for that matter, with such negative feelings of what might happen today, what might this person say today. So that's definitely an area that we need to get better. I think the pandemic forced us to look at some of those things. And I, as a parent, had to come to that realization when my own son said that. So me being the educator that I thought I was, I was still missing a piece at home with my own kid. So I think the pandemic made us look at a lot of things. And then another one that's not so touchy of a subject for me is the technology use. I think we pride ourselves on being technologically savvy, but then when it was time to use the technology, we didn't really have a clue on how to use it. Some people did in smaller pockets, but many of our teachers struggled with the transition to the virtual learning. So to me, the difference is not the thing that we put in the hands of the students, but it's actually the person who interprets this as a tool and make this still an engaging environment for our students. It's not the iPad, it's not the Chromebook, but it's the teacher. So just putting something in the hands of the students is not the, not the answer. But how were we prepared as a district to transition into something like virtual learning? And I think we learned that we could definitely improve in the area of professional development with different pieces of technology that way. The last thing I want to touch on is, the pandemic forced educators to collaborate differently. I saw different groups pop up on Facebook, RPS educators online, and people were actually sharing tips with each other. People were leaning on each other. When they didn't know how to do something with the technology, someone else would step up and say, this is what helped up and say, this is what helped me. And I don't know why it took a pandemic for that to happen. But there has to be a better way for us to collaborate across district and across teams better than what we have before. So I think the pandemic forced us to do some things better.
You know, another part of the essay, Fulan says humans are born to collaborate. And well, just as you were saying there, I wonder if that's sort of leading into the next question. That's one of the things that maybe really needs to change because, you know, have we taught students and teachers to just figure it out for yourself, do the work for yourself? And we have sort of either beaten out or at minimum not enforced this need to collaborate, to work with others. So Fulan talks about traditional education doesn't work, the current model of education doesn't work. And clearly he says it needs to be changed, but the question that Kant poses here is, do you agree with Fulan's assessment that the traditional system of education does not work for most students? And I think that sort of leads into what is the traditional system of education? And is that what Rochester is delivering? So you can take this a number of different directions.
I have a hard time with absolutes, that, you know, the current education system flat out does not work. I mean, you've all been in our buildings and classrooms. I mean, I've seen evidence this school year of education that really is working. Our focus on relationships and our focus on getting to know students, you know, there is a lot of that going on. Is it working for all students? No. But I don't think that to say that it's not working for the vast majority of students. But then you get into, you know, the pushback on that could be, well, you know, ask our kids. And sometimes I think that's tricky too because like when we look at grading and reform on there and making that more equitable, the kids that the system is working for are going to say any change to that system is not working because they're benefiting from it. So do I think that it's working for all of our kids? No. But I just, I have a hard time with the absolutes. And maybe he's just, you know, trying to make a point and have you bristle a little bit, but it's, we're not all bad.
Well, and I approach that from the opposite view. The question was not, is the system failing? I think we all could then take a hardened position and say, well, no. Is it working? And points aren't even made, not for all. The vast majority, and I tend to agree from the position of if one is left behind, that's one too many. And especially if that one happens to be your son or your daughter or your grandson or granddaughter. But even if it isn't, the fact that we are tasked with providing a high-quality education for and premise all students, but is it our core belief that we actually mean and we are committed to that task? And so I see it more so as an opportunity, not as a eat against the system, but an opportunity for the system to say, well, can we do a better job? And all should say, well, yes, most definitely. And are we committed to do a better job again? Yes, most definitely. And so I'll just, you know, say that this research has been quite useful to me in that it speaks to core belief I have perhaps have communicated in different words, language examples than what is presented here, but I think it provides a great opportunity for us to reflect and to maybe even develop some hardened strategic considerations in terms of how we move forward.
In general, I agree with most of you who have spoken. I had a hard time when I started reading the article because there were little pieces that I liked that that quite clicked with me and then if the foundation is built on little pieces that didn't really resonate with me, it was hard to, hard to trust that the article was going somewhere that I wanted to go with it. But I do, I do see the opportunity. You know, we've all changed the way we think about the world in large, large ways, not about education, but the world because of the pandemic and we've had to change the way we do things. And we've seen innovations, we've seen flexibility, we've seen having to compromise our standards a little bit in order to get through, you know, especially when we were doing systems and hybrid learning. And if that broke our rigidity about there's only one way or there's only one best way or nobody else would accept any kind of change, if that opened a door for us, we should go through it. Whether or not it works for everybody or not, I think that we have all seen before the pandemic that it didn't work for everybody. I think the pandemic shone a light on some of the challenges that we maybe knew in our heads were there, but we got to see it lived out and played out. And now we're benefiting from the very beginning of research coming out about what kinds of things happened to kids in the education world during the upheaval. There was a study I saw about how babies born during the pandemic have lower cognitive scores now. And that's, you know, long, long before they get into the education system, but that's something that the education system is going to have to be dealing with soon. So the ripple effect of the pandemic is going to go on forever, really. So if there's nothing else that comes of this, that we have an opportunity and we have minds that are open, I think it's the perfect opportunity for us to think, now, how can we pivot? You know, that's all what, that's what we did the last couple of years, we pivoted. But it might be comfortable to go back to what we've been doing, but we would be missing an opportunity. Whether the question, I agree with Brenda, that it's hard to hear something about does not work because, you know, again, that's the premise when I was reading it, I'm like, well, I don't agree with that. I think it works a little bit for most kids and it works most of the way for some kids. And I don't think it's perfect for anybody, but you know, that's what we have to do in a system, we have to work towards the majority. But when we look at test scores and the majority aren't testing the test scores, again, we ask ourselves, is the test measuring what we want it to measure? But I would argue that it isn't even working for the majority. You hear people talk about how we're set up to match the agricultural system, you know, we have school months and we have the summers off because that's what they used to do for the old, old way. I would also argue that context is important when children sit and listen. It's like that question, kids will say, why do I need to learn that? When am I going to use this math in my, in my real life? I think we need to look at context too. It has nothing to do with the pandemic, but this is the opportunity, the door that's been opened where we have a chance to rethink everything and restructure things. Can't stop learning for kids rather than sitting at a desk and listening to somebody talk? That, that type of example of the kinds of, how are we teaching kids? Small children, preschoolers, infants, they aren't taught. Nobody sits down and tells them, you know, these are the words you should learn, here's your vocabulary words, study them. Yet by age two, you know, what's the vocabulary of a two-year-old? It's, you know, hundreds of words, if not thousands receptively. They can speak hundreds of words and they know thousands. Nobody taught them that, but they had presumably an enriched environment and we taught themselves. Why does that change suddenly when children get to school? Why does suddenly we have to impart to them rather than enriching their experiences and making it contextual? So when we talk about algebra, why do we have to learn this? If we can get more of that experiential learning? And why do we have grade levels? Why do all 10-year-olds have to be in a room together? All of those things, if we really throw out what we already know about school systems and think, you know, what, which of these things are really best for kids and where do kids fulfill their own potentials rather than the tests that we set out and the lists that they have to learn by a certain date? So I'm all for what parts of the system work and what parts don't, but from a much, much more global level. But I don't think that we can solve it in this district for sure. We have state and federal requirements we have to fulfill. State standards are set for us. We don't really have the ability to color outside the lines too much. So that's one of the challenges.
I disagree.
Really?
Yeah, I profoundly disagree. And I think, I recognize that we have state standards and other people are telling us what to do, but that's part of our responsibility as the system, like that's talked about in the, in the article, like towards the end is like, we are behaving like we're fragmented and we're like, oh, we can't do anything because other people are telling us what to do. But if every single person in here has the experience of, we got to see what happened when we as a group mobilized to feed our kids and we recognize, oh, wait a second, if we could do it in a matter of days or hours in some cases, like why can't we do this in other areas? Then those are the things that, those are the things we need to be taking to the other people that are making the decision. Like we are part of a different system with them and like what is our interrelational tethering to these other, other separate systems in and of themselves? And so I think that like taking, you know, absolutes make people uncomfortable, right? And even those like psychologists, we tell people like, you know, there are no absolutes, there's a lot of gray space. But I think what the article, you know, when the article's talking about like academics obsession, like we are, we choose to look at numbers for things that don't equate to what like the outcome is. That doesn't really make sense as a, like, why would we keep doing that to kids? You know, like why, the US education system, like when it started in the Northeast was for rich white kids or like kids that we saw promise in and thought, we need to teach them Latin and we need to teach them all of these other things so that they can go on and be successful people. And it was very exclusionary. And it's still exclusionary because right now, like even look at within our system is we have like a Phoenix or we have an ALC where kids are told, you don't fit here, we're putting you over here. And how, how uncomfortable must that be for someone to not, to have it be couched as if there's something wrong with you, not, we understand and we built this program for you, here's this new place for you to be. And I just toured, ALC, I just toured Phoenix and the staff there do a phenomenal job. And I think, I'm glad that we have that because a lot of districts don't. But those things were created in their inception because we said, well, this is our system and we work for the majority and now we're going to pick up kids that don't fit there and move them over here. I don't want to be that district. I want to fulfill that need. And if that's the need we have, like, we need to resource those schools accordingly and we don't.
And this is what you said is really critical and what's been on my mind and is it's not necessarily our, is our system failing? Yes, I think the system is, but it boils down to the individual teachers and how, how kids experience school is very dependent on individual teachers. And the approach at ALC works for kids, I would say, because of the teachers who designed it and our teaching in it. And I think, you know, I'll go back to another art example, years ago, and it's long enough I can talk about it. I did an observation in an art classroom where the outcome in this kindergarten classroom was this fish and it was based on a book, The Rainbow Fish. And kids all got one shiny scale to put on their drawing after they finished it and the teeth, and the kids who asked for an extra scale were told, no, because it's one scale. That's all, that's all you get, that's all that's in the illustration that you're copying. And when you're done, bring it over to me and I'll do the lips on it because you probably can't do them right. So every kid finished with the same fish project that looked just like the illustration in the book. If you go over and watch Tiffany Erie at Ben Franklin teach art, she teaches the standard and the kids decide, how do I want to demonstrate I understand this? Do I want to do a clay project or do I want to do a group project and do a collage? And, you know, I can do clay even though it's not April because, you know, I'm not firing up the quilt, the kiln just one time a year, I'm doing it whenever the kids decide that's what they want, how they want to demonstrate their understanding. So we shouldn't have a system where it depends on who's teaching you, whether it works for you or not. But really that's what it boils down to.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're more on the same page than, than it maybe sounds like because what I'm saying is that some of the things that we had to do during the pandemic, rules were relaxed on the state level. I can't give you any specifics, but I betcha every cabinet member here can give an example of something that we thought was a restriction. And because a rule was relaxed from MBE or because we received extra money for something that we wouldn't have other than the pandemic and that money may be going home right now. It's, it's, we have so many limitations, both on requirements and, you know, what's prohibited, that if we were to look at huge systemic change, I think we'd need to be asking for extra funding, relaxing the rules, changes in standards that might be outside of our capacity to control outside of extras, you know, extraordinary circumstances like the pandemic. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. It's just something that I think we need to be cognizant of and that we may not be able to pivot quickly like we did during the pandemic. Because if we need to make a case for large changes, it may take a while to go through the bureaucracy. You know, like, like the online school, Becky, how much of that, those jumping through hoops to get there would we have been able to do in a normal year? I'm under the impression that that was expedited by MBE and that that kind of approval turned around.
Actually, there was an expedited process, but we went through it before the expedited process.
Okay. But, but that's an example of, of one of the things that maybe wouldn't have happened as quickly during the pre-pandemic times. But I'm anxious for change, I'm anxious for, you know, individualized learning or whatever we're talking about, but I'm just, I guess I'm trying to calm myself down from, from high aspirations because.
And I don't.
I think.
All right. Whatever your, whatever the high aspirations are in this space, like we, it just needs, we need to put it out there so that we as a system can make as close to an absolute as possible that it is working for every student and every educator, every staff member. So I feel like for me, what COVID did was to realize like, you know what, I used to ask permission for a lot of things and now I'm just going to do it? And if there's a roadblock, then I work with that roadblock. I mean, I can anticipate that it's going to be there, well, those things will probably always be there because we cannot control systems outside of ourselves, but we can communicate as a system, you know? And I think like, you know, we're talking about going down to like each individual educator and is that educator matched well to a particular student maybe or maybe not? But if we already know that's something that could be fixed or could be adjusted or could be reimagined, as we are now liking to say, like, why are we not doing that or at least trying? And then when we get pushed back on the thing, we figure out, okay, well, is this something that's negotiable to us? And if it's not, how and where do we stand our ground? And if it is negotiable, then we negotiate.
And I think part of what Fulan is saying, he's talking, again, he's talking about traditional learning, traditional education. What does that mean? I mean, he doesn't define what that is. And I think in a lot of people's minds, he's the teacher in front of the room, a bunch of kids sitting in rows and teacher talking and the kids taking notes. of kids sitting in rows, and teacher talking, and the kids taking notes. And there's some of that going on still. And I think, I think some of that is acceptable. But this district, I think, has, over the last several years especially, really pushed the boundaries. And we're certainly not where we need to be in it. And just, I couldn't agree with you more, that this needs to be disruptive change. And Fulan will say, and it has to come from the grassroots. It has to be the student voice. He was huge about talking the student voice. They're going to be the change agents. It has to be lateral and vertical control and collaboration. It has to be our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our community. Everybody's going to have a voice in this. It can't be a group here having an idea and telling everybody else, this is what you got to do. But it seems to me in Rochester, we've taken steps at least in terms of really kind of pushing back on that tradition. You know, we're, we are emphasizing relationships, and social, emotional. We're looking at culturally responsive teaching and learning. We're, you know, we've got PLC and, that's, PLC, CTEC and PTEC and Incubator EDU. And we've got a lot of project-based learning going on. ALC is a perfect example of that. A lot of interdisciplinary classes. People are making up new courses and combining things all the time. We've got Project Lead the Way. So I think that we're doing something. I'm not sure that it's, I, I don't think it's enough. And I do think that we're still missing a whole bunch of kids, but I think we have the potential to be that district that does really reimagine education.
And Dean, I would add to that conversation, too, that I was thinking about this traditional learning, of ways that the cabinet and the experts in the room can help us identify things at the state and national level that need to be changed. That I think the author even recognizes, you know, things will have to change at those different levels. But I would like to hear, in the strategic planning process, more details about what needs to change at the Minnesota state level, what needs to change at the federal level to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
I think we had a good example this summer of that distributed alignment. When we brought a thinking team together to reimagine summer, they identified sort of the core edges of it. And then our teachers and assistants and a few principals got together and they redesigned it. And then they carried it out. And I think the, this idea that we had a goal for a first year of a, you know, multi-year change effort, but it wasn't a top-down. It was, we have an opportunity, and the money really made that possible. I want to be clear, we wouldn't have been facing that opportunity in the moment we were if there hadn't been the dollars available to do some of the supportive things that we wanted to do, like provide more design time for people to really rethink what it is and respect that professional effort. So I think we have a small example of what could be a distributed system, like he's talking about, very egalitarian and all levels involved. It's a tiny example compared to an entire system change, but I think that's a signal that people stepped up and participated and, and really felt like it was worth it.
I also consider, I'm glad I didn't look at the questions until after I read the article, because I really appreciated all of the ways that he talked about measuring student outcomes. Obviously, he had a, a lot to say about academic outcomes in the first, but, you know, the six Cs and the seven kinds of intelligence, and, you know, we saw, everybody saw the parallel to our graduate profile descriptions. So that's great, right? We have them. But we know, we've been talking about, how do you measure them, right? How do you know whether our system has done what it needs to do to support a student in developing themselves in all of the, in all the profile areas? And there's nothing that the state is telling us that we can't figure out a way to measure that. There are so many of these examples that he had in the paper, that were we to put in the money and the resources and the time, we could have our required assessments, and then we could have all the assessments that we think really represent what our students and our graduates need to have. So for me, when I look at the, you know, traditional system of education not working for more, for, for all students, if, if my report card included everything that he had in his paper, the answer would be definitely no. Even those kids that we would traditionally look at as being our, our successors, right? Those high flyers, or high achievers, whatever they're talking about. They don't always know how to do life. They may have done everything right on the test, but they, they, they may not be well mentally because of the obsession with academics. They may not have some of those other skills. So, you know, when you talk about contributing to the global community once they leave here, there's only so far you can go with, you know, having memorized Shakespeare by the time that you've left high school. And we hear that from parents all the time, right? We hear about personal finance, we hear about biomechanics, we hear about a lot of those practical skills, facts that we used to, you know, really have, or industrial tech. And I think that's a reflection of that balance between the academics and, you know, some of the ways that you learn how to do life, that I really appreciated, what he talked about in the article.
And keep in mind, this is the first discussion of many, I think, will be having as we move forward with strategic plan and, and probably read more papers like this. But Kathy, you mentioned assessment, which brings us to question three, where, did you see what I did just there?
Uh huh.
Okay, you're welcome. Where Fulan is talking about improvement and evaluation, and the question is, what's the difference between improvement and evaluation? And should our strategic action plan emphasize improvement over evaluation?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to question four.
That's what I had on my sheet. Yes. But currently, we don't have great systems for that. And so that's why, you know, we've been advocating on that budget wishlist for somebody to help us with that. And I'm so glad that we are moving in that direction, and that position has been posted, the director of research, I think we landed on. Just, I'm just trying to give you a, a foreshadow of the upcoming World's Best Workforce in A&amp;I Plan reporting. Like, it doesn't, you know, hopefully next year we'll have a, just more focus on improvement over just MCA scores. Because that does not tell our story.
I keep trying to boil this down to my experience in schools as a teacher and as an administrator. And to me, I think about the class tool you've heard about is our, the way that we quote-unquote evaluate our coaching staff. And if you use the class tool strictly to say, you know, there, you get a four out of seven in this dimension, then it's an evaluation. But if you use the tool the way it really is designed to use to give feedback, like, I observed you doing this, this, and this, and this is why this is really helpful for the kids, or have you thought about trying this? Then it becomes an improvement. It becomes what I think it was intended to do, to improve instruction versus evaluate or say, you're a four out of seven, which doesn't help anyone really, unless it comes with that kind of feedback and coaching dialogue that we really need to be engaged in in order to, to address improvement.
I would tend to agree with that. I know, just from my experience as a parent, one of my sons, who's junior year in high school, wrote a three or four-page English paper. And I've always thought that English teachers should have a whole lot more time to actually really thoroughly grade, you know, these kinds of things. It came back with a number on it. Not even over a hundred, but just a number. I don't know if she even read it. So how does that help a kid?
To be clear, I was not...
No, I wasn't.
But I just want to make sure we've got that.
My kids unfortunately did not have Dr. Marvin for English. Unfortunately for her, she did not have it either.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, moving on. And clearly, we're going to be talking about evaluation and grading and that type of thing. That's going to be a, continue to be a big issue going forward. You know, what does a grade mean? And what, Jackie, as you said, how can they be really useful in terms of ensuring that every student will, will remain a lifelong leader? But going on to this fourth question here, he's, Fulan's talking about the difference between system-ness and fragmentation. And he says, there are standards over there, assessments over here, teacher appraisals in another box, communications that contradict each other, and so on. Does the right hand know what the left is doing? Are the levels of the system coordinated? So is Fulan's description, do you think, of educational system where there are a lot of things going on, but no system-ness to it, is that an accurate description of the system that exists in Rochester Public Schools?
I felt that way when I started. And I, maybe it was just like school board stuff, but I think I was very confused even just at my level, so I can imagine a student, you know, and all the way up to other administrators, like, I, I didn't understand fully what I was getting myself into, and there was confusion about what we're not allowed to do because it's in policy versus statute versus, because that's the way people like to do things. And it just felt very disjointed. But now that I'm like in the room, I can feel that there's something at work here. But there, I'm still hearing from people outside of this room that they don't feel either there is a system and it's intentionally exclusionary, or there really is no system and we're just kind of a facade of a group. And I, like, there's some, there's movement, there's something there. Like, we are, I can, I can feel like the energy sort of coalesces around certain things. But I do sometimes get the sense that there are people who are doing really amazing work over here that I have no idea about until I stumble upon them, and I wish that that wasn't the case. And that there are people over here who really need help, and I don't know that they need help until something horrible happens, and I wish that that wasn't the case. Yeah. And I think boundaries and expectations of like other groups are who, who is supposed to be doing what and when. I think Karen and I took it upon ourselves to try to, like, set up meetings with all of the cabinet members, because we wanted to be part of, like, a system that was going to work for the students and the staff.
And I think you're, you're spot on. One of the things I thought about is, it depends on where you're at in the system, right? I mean, I think, like you said, we kind of see the package because we're, we're in it and we're interacting with the people who are putting the pieces together. But I've had two examples from parents in the past few days where our customer service has broken down. And their entire perception of how they see our system is based on how that interaction with the district didn't go well for them. So they definitely don't see a system, and they definitely see brokenness, because they don't understand why the left hand and the right hand aren't speaking together, or they can't find the information they need, et cetera. So I think we also, as a board, and, you know, now that we're working on this annual calendar, never thought about it before, but we don't do a good job when we're making a decision, talking about how it affects the classroom, or the teachers, or the students. Now, sometimes it's, it's intertwined, it's clear. But there's other things that we do that some people are probably watching us saying, why are you even voting on that? Or why is that decision important to my kid? You know, you got, you're, you're not affecting education. So maybe we need to be more intentional at the system policymaking level to communicate that better. And then see how we can do better communication and information sharing through the system, so that when you are just encountering the system about a single issue for your child, you can somehow connect it to the broader plan outcomes that we intend by, by what we're doing and how we've designed it.
I, I would agree with that on what you just said, to say that I think having a systems mindset requires us, school board members to know more about our system. I didn't feel qualified to answer this question, because it says things about, you know, teacher appraisal here, and, and we don't even get into that at the school board level. That is not something that comes across our agenda, teacher appraisal. So it's hard for us, I think, to, like, like what Kathy said about, at the beginning of, of what you said, that the whole, I don't know what I'm trying to say, it's just, it's hard to understand how all the pieces interlock if we don't know what all the pieces are. And it's like putting together a puzzle without having the picture on the front of the box to know what it is you're working towards. So I think from a school board, we are going to have to rely on the other experts in the room to tell us how those pieces are supposed to fit, fit together and give us the picture on the front of the box of the puzzle. I, I didn't even know how to answer this, because it's a system that, that is very detailed, and we don't have the exposure to understand the pieces.
And I would add to that, too, as a newer board member, is that if changes are made in one area, does it impact the other area at all? That that would be really helpful to know from the cabinet as we're going through this strategic planning, that if we're making a change here, how is it impacting somebody else that we might not even know exists or is impacted?
Right. So what I'm sort of hearing is that we are, to some extent, whether it's conscious or not, we're still operating in some silos. And some silos actually talk to each other and work well together. Maybe they are all working well together, but I, as a board member, I have no clue if they are. And yet, it may, someone may say to me, well, why do you need to know that? You know, your business is, is, I don't know, what is our business? Policy, hiring, the superintendent approving the budget, and you don't need to know anything else? You know, and I think that's, I think that's a really critical thing, when people can step outside their silos and not, and make themselves vulnerable, but without feeling like the people that they're making themselves vulnerable to are going to hurt them, or that if I ask a question, it's not, well, I don't really trust you, or I don't believe what you say, it's, you know, tell me some more about this. This is interesting. And so is that part of my job description, to know any of that, to understand it? And I'm not saying that that's necessarily going on here in this room with this group of people, but certainly on my early years on the board, there was an awful lot of that that was happening. And I think, in some respects, we, we've made some real big, you know, a lot of progress. We had, you know, there's always a, an overturn of personnel, both as employees and as school board members. So I think if we can all be on the same page as to, what are those standards? What are those assessments over here? Teacher, teacher appraisal, communication? You know, we need to understand how those work together, but if people aren't willing to talk to us about it, then we're not going to understand it. And I think there could be some tension that would arise as a result.
So if it is predicated on the public's view or the view of others, that opening line, many teachers, parents, students, advocates, and others would agree with the following description, I won't go into any further detail, less about our internal view as a member of a board and how we perceive this or interpret that, but how we are viewed by others. And I think Kathy hit the nail on the head when she said, well, just in the past couple days, she's encountered a few instances where members of the public have perhaps raised this as a truth, a reality, which is really what we're being asked to respond to. And I would agree, perception is hugely important. And yet, obviously, what is equally important is if we, who are a part of the system, also feel that we may be not necessarily fully knowledgeable of, and we could benefit from a more sense of feeling a part of, then, then that, that certainly is important. But I think more important than how we may feel, or what our experiences may be, is that of our constituent base, you know, our students, taxpayers... is that of our constituent base, you know, our students, taxpayers, teachers, parents, advocates. And so whatever we can do to help them better understand, I think we as board members and perhaps even cabinet receive copious amounts of emails regarding, you name it. And so that is again suggestive of the need to communicate and to be responsive to. And so I view this whole question of, do I think the description is accurate? Yes, to a large degree. I don't view that as a negative, simply suggesting, oh, there are opportunities and it's worth pursuing.
And I agree with what Don's saying. And it kind of triggered for me, going back to the second question about traditional learning and kind of tying it to one of our speakers at one of the last meetings, that I didn't necessarily track with everything she was telling us. But I think what she was telling us is she wanted to see traditional learning. And I was thinking, that's not what we're really doing. In your mind of traditional learning, that I think we've really grown from that in a way that's extremely beneficial to the students in terms of the culture and what they're learning in the curriculum. And I think we've come a long way from what she, I think, viewed as traditional learning. But I don't think we communicate that to our constituents at all after hearing her comment.
Yeah, and I would agree with much of what Don said. But I think in order for me to communicate anything to the public, I have to know what it is, how the pieces work, I have to understand it. You know, so if I were to try and explain some calculus problem to you, I would be in trouble and you would learn nothing. If it had something to do with music, there, I, we might have some success. So I guess that was more where I was coming from, just in terms of it's helpful to know how things work or what's going on. Not that knowing doesn't mean that we want to go in and manage or tell you how to do your job. That would be terrible. I mean, you know, when Scott presents his stuff on the facilities, it's kind of like, well, you know what, I don't really know a whole lot about this, but I trust Scott and his team and this is the way it is. And these reports come in and they're consistent and regular and within the scope of what we're trying to do. So I just picked on Scott because he's sort of in my line of sight. And I think that was an easy example for me to use as illustration.
And I would give the contrast there, that I think Fulon talked a lot about deep learning. And I really like that term. And I think our students really benefit from that and could do more of that. And that's, I think that's the experiential that Jane was talking about. We don't need to do that deep learning on all these topics. But I think just talking points or concepts about what you want us to know so that we can do our jobs better would be helpful.
I also think about, if we were having this conversation about this article without the pandemic, I think we'd be saying a lot of the same things we're saying. But since our parents were in their child's classrooms for such a long time, I think their exposure to the system has raised a lot more antenna than perhaps was raised before. So if we're thinking about how the pandemic might change our approach in the future, I think we have to be doing more explaining because they've seen things or they've heard things or they've experienced things and they have questions. And I think we're going to see, I think someone has already said it, the parents are going to be more engaged in their children's learning. And we owe it to them to, it's sort of like the thing, like you said, with the deep learning. They don't have to have the deep learning, but I think they're going to be looking for an easier way to understand what they're seeing their child's educational experience be. And that's one thing we've talked about a lot is parent engagement and community engagement. And I think, you know, the pandemic is giving us that opportunity to expand on that. I mean, those of you who are on the community engagement committee are certainly have more to say than those of us who aren't on that committee. So I really appreciate the work that you've been doing in those areas.
I've been thinking a lot about the silo comment earlier. And I think in a large organization, whether school district or not, it's impossible not to have silos. Even within a school, think about a high school, you have the various departments or sports or activities or whatever the groups are. And I feel like the deeper you are inside of the silo, the less systemness you're going to experience. So maybe the difference between specialist and generalist. When we work at the district level, it's part of our job to have an eye on all of the silos. But even between different cabinet members, you're going to have different levels of expertise in different silos, right? I know best what's going on in my areas of responsibility, but I don't necessarily know all that Carla's got going on in her special ed silos, if you will. So I don't know that we can eliminate silos. I think what we could do is work to connect. Because when you have someone, you see it all the time, when they cross over into those different silos, all of a sudden the connections begin to happen and we get that synergy. I don't think it's reasonable for every teacher to know everything that's going on in the district or every principal to know what's going on in every building or every district administrator to know the depth of what's going on in every classroom. Silos happen as you get larger and larger and larger, even in small districts. I've worked in small districts, you have silos there too. And it's, you know, I'm sure Google has silos within Google. It's everywhere. And it's part of specializing in what you do and gathering the people around who have similar responsibilities and getting good at what you do. I think the challenge is not to eliminate silos, but to connect across them as much as we can and where it makes sense.
I apologize if I, if you thought I was implying that we needed to eliminate silos or that everybody needed to know everything about everything, which is an impossibility. But just to, as you say, to make that synergy happen, you know, and I've certainly seen a great deal of change in the last five years. I think we've really moved a lot in that direction very positively.
The question talks about coordination of the system, of the levels of the system's coordinators. And back to what I originally started saying is that I don't know enough about it to know if the systems are coordinated via the cabinet level and other staff members are the ones who would have to tell us whether or not they thought they were coordinating. But I think with a well-located system, those linkages would be in place. It's kind of like, to use an educational concept, the third grade teachers need to know what the second grade teachers were doing and they need to know what the fourth grade teachers will be doing. And they need to know what the other third grade teachers are doing. So there's all these levels of communication that has to happen with the system. But we need to design the system so that happens. And that can be applied to, you know, any number of other examples, you know, the different cabinet departments. So I think just with a mind to keeping, keeping that coordination of systems and I guess we're going to be retooling anything.
So maybe the question is more about how well are we doing that coordination? Rather, are we, does the left hand know what the right hand is doing? Well, not always, but they don't always need to know either. You know, I think it depends on the situation. And the more we're connected, the more we're involved in getting voice from all those levels, the better. Totally agree with that. I answered it, it's a system. I mean, I don't think you can argue that we're not a system. But improvement efforts are complex. It's really, the bigger the district, the more complexity you have to work with.
But building in those opportunities, building in time for communication, building in time for coordination.
Well, and I want to build on something Amy said earlier about the summer school planning. You deliberately had funds to pay the individuals to do the planning. And, you know, even though we came together on the food situation because it was, you know, an emergency, people found the time in what they were doing to come together and do it. So you talk so much about the collaboration and the social interaction and the Hattie visible learning and how high that teacher collaboration is rated on the effect on student outcomes. I think that is, that was a theme that I kept coming to as we go forward and thinking about the strategic action plan is how do we fit that in so that we're not adding an extra burden to our teaching staff and our administrators and our cabinet to say, here's another thing you have to do in your day. Do, will our students benefit? Was it Wednesdays that was asynchronous learning when we were on distance learning?
Yeah.
Heard a lot about it from a lot of people that want it back.
Yeah.
Because they, the students had a day, the teachers had a day. It, they weren't having to do everything they had to do in the context of also teaching a whole day. And, but that takes a retooling of the time for learning. It takes a retooling of funds and resources. But I think we're going to have to intentionally build that in if we're going to hope to have that kind of collaboration and cross-silo linkages.
Just clarifying like what that is. Because I think we're all saying in very different ways, like we know that there is some sort of system, but nobody is really sure what it is, like what is our org chart type of thing, right? And I know that when we did the, you know, working with all the cabinet members to just get caught up to speed on what everyone does, it felt very much like if I were to try to draw the org chart, there is a lot of overlap. And so I think what I'm also hearing from Amy, and I appreciate this, is the, a clearly defined, like what is the system and where are you in that system? And then understanding what our boundaries are so they're not so rigid that we're only working in silos and not so porous that no one knows who they are from the other person. And we don't, right, need to do all of the deep learning because I can tap you for your expertise and you for your expertise, et cetera. But I think we as a system need to understand who we are. And like as a psychologist, if you're doing like family therapy, we take a look at the individual who's receiving the service and all of the systems that impact that individual. And sometimes they're people, like family members. Sometimes it's like church and school, et cetera. And I don't think that we have a good handle on what that is for the district. And I thought it was just me being new, but I feel like I haven't heard anyone very clearly established outside of their cabinet, their school board, we sometimes get in the same room together. What is our system?
Well, and that, I think, is going to be a huge question as we work on our strategic action plan. I think it's, way it's set up is to address not only how do we interact with each other, but also how does this program and that program and this program fit in to what our goals are, to what our mission is, and make that clear? It's the interaction between groups as well as, are we going to really spend money on this new strategy, this new program, just because it's shiny? Or is there something in our overall strategic plan that this is going to address? So at this point, we have six minutes left and we have three choices. Either we can spend six minutes talking about how we're doing on developing social intelligence or we can talk about how Rochester is doing with equity investments. Or if somebody has something else, we can talk about that. The first one to speak up gets to call it.
Let me talk about the picture.
The which?
The, the illustration.
Oh, okay.
Of the equity piece.
The tree went.
The tree, yeah. And when I saw that, I immediately thought of gardening. Because I don't, I don't think our kids, if we're looking to the worst-case scenario, right? The barren tree and the barren landscape. I think that our kids are all different and some of their leaves are wilting and yellow because they're not getting the nourishment or the water that they need. And some are flourishing and thriving, but their root systems might be rotting. And so I think that one stark tree, it's not what we know about our system and our kids. It's sort of that, the absolutes, right? To say it's not working at all. I think it's, it's working, but you have to look at each and every individual student to see the degree to which it's working, so.
Or to utilize the analogy, maybe there's a big bucket of water and we're dumping it where we can't tell where the roots are or not. You know, maybe we think that we're watering the roots and maybe the roots, where the water isn't reaching roots. So I took from the article, you know, that there's been a large investment in equity, according to the author, arguable. But without the results that we want to see from that investment of time and money. So sometimes it could just be, you know, digging down to the roots.
Well, two quick things. Equity was never about just a pot of money and do you have equity? And so, but when I look at the picture, I see all the potential that hasn't yet been developed. That is dormant. That with the proper resourcing supports, you know, the potential of what could be. And I think the language of austerity, I think, is important. As well as on the flip side of that, he didn't use prosperity, but I think those are truths that have to be acknowledged. And yet again, the potential that has yet to be developed and or released is something that should, we each should see, hope for, and strive to do our best part to ensure that the picture changes.
Okay, we have to end on that. I mean, thank you so much, Don. I think that was beautiful. And, you know, the author talks about learned hopefulness. And I think as we move forward, we know that hope isn't a plan, but that if we really believe things need to change and they can change, that we can make that potential flourish. Mr. Barlow, you should think about being a preacher. Just putting it out there. Anything else? All right, it is 6:28 and we are adjourned. Oh, say goodbye to Karen.